Zoning Board of Appeals to order, please. Roll call Dana.
Teller?
Here.
Vincent?
Here.
Barrett?
Here.
Cal Coffin?
Here. Yeah, Kirk is excused.
Excuse.
Okay, please rise from the plenum, ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is the approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All right. On item number five, we are going to delete item number five, the regular, the minutes from the June 2 meeting, and we will address all the minutes after this meeting. So would amend the agenda to remove item five. Any other comments?
No.
Hearing none. Approval of the amended agenda. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Agenda is approved. Unfinished business, quadrate, construction, space park, variance. I need a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
Technically, we never closed it. The stuff was voted out.
We postponed it.
There you go.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I will go over this very quickly before I ask you to step to the podium, just so that you know. We don't have the public here to participate, so I'm not going to go through that again. But I will tell you that you need three votes to approve the project. We are missing one member. A two-to-two vote is a denial. So you have the option of postponing this meeting until we have a fifth member, or we can proceed. Proceed, okay. At this time, we were provided with the information that we requested, and if you would, would you step to the mic and just, just give us an overview of that document?
So, this is a piece of equipment that the company going in that building will make and manufacture for either, they redacted the information, I think, for who it's for, but either Boeing or Blue Origin, whatever. It's a platform assembly that they need that'll either go upside the plane or upside the rocket, whichever one. It looks like the, the platform, to the top of the platform is 275 inches, and then there's a piece of equipment that's 143 inches tall. Net-net, looks like we need about 42.8 feet, 428 inches, 35.6 feet, under the hook.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding the information that we've been provided?
So this platform is what they would be making inside that building, something like this?
Yeah, they're, they're going to build this, and then kind of like what you saw on the first attachment that surrounds the, the rocket. This, this, to me, this looks like more of an airplane assembly, but similar to the first image that, that we sent you on that document.
My only question is, actually came up during, it didn't come up during the plan interview, I just, or the plan commission meeting, I just noticed it is that, the doors to bring material in and out of the facility aren't that large, maybe 20 feet tall or something. So, does all this get broken down at some point to fit on semis to transfer it out?
Correct. This is, so they, they have to have wide loads to just transport it, but it's still, wide loads have a maximum, you know what I mean, because they got to travel on the highway. So, yeah, they'll assemble it, make sure everything goes together, break it down, and then ship it. Sometimes they'll put it on an airplane if it's too big, but I don't know how that's all there, and you know what I mean?
All right, I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions? Any comments? I have one, I guess it's more of a, a housekeeping question. On the application, the property identification, is that the new parcel, the parcel number that's on the application?
What line are you talking about?
Right here.
Yes, that's the new parcel number. So that's, that's the one with the property on it. The parcel numbers, to my knowledge, we haven't done the lot split combination, but the two before it, going towards the main road, those lot numbers stay the same number, those just get resized, right? They won't be assigned new lot numbers?
Right. I, I don't do that, but I think you're correct.
Yeah, that's the, the lot number from?
Is that?
That they're building the building on.
That's the lot number of the two combined pieces?
It's, they're not going to be combined. They're doing a, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
They're, they're going to do a, a boundary readjust, so, so the one property line is just moving over. They're not going to, it's not going to be a, a combined situation.
Two towards the main road are going to be equal in size, divided by two, whatever we took from the middle parcel, then what's there?
Okay, so that'll have that same parcel number?
Yes.
Okay. Because the variance goes with the property.
Right. Yeah, this, this, it's just moving the line.
You get to build half your building, so. Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
We didn't want to go through that step until we knew we were going to get approved to do it, so.
Yeah.
That'll be next.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure it was correct, because it'll be referenced in the, in the motion, so wanted to make sure we had the whole piece. Any other questions or comments? At this point, I would ask to close, a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. At this time, the board will, has the ability to discuss anything else that you feel is pertinent to the request.
I will say, just from the planning commission, we did hear this project at the last planning commission meeting on Wednesday. The planning commission did vote to conditionally approve it, several items in that conditions, just in talking with the applicant, one of those obviously being the outcome of this decision, but there was support for this project at the PC.
Okay, good. Any anything?
No, I'm good to go.
Good.
You're good? Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to either approve or deny the request for the zoning variance.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the parcel 14-01-25-400-022 for a variance of five foot, six inches, with the following conditions. Forty-five feet, six inches is the maximum height of the building and any associated equipment on it. The reasons being, one, strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance would create a practical difficulty by limiting the approved use of the part, of the property because of the requirements outside the owner's control. Two, the height requirement is unique to this property and does not conflict with the overall development plan of the proposed space, proposed space park. The property is surrounded by similarly zoned parcels. Three, the conditions and circumstances were not created by the owner or the previous owner. The height requirements are legitimate industry-accepted standards mandated to safety, safely perform the manufacturing activities. They are standards that are continually monitored. are standards that are continually monitored and cannot be altered. Number four, other similar properties will receive the same similar considerations. And number five, granting the variance in the consistent, is consistent with the spirit and intent of the Bruce Township zoning ordinance to provide a wide range of development opportunities in the community.
All written.
I second.
Okay, we have motion. We have a second. Roll call, please, Dana.
Teller?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Cal Kaufman?
Yes. The request for the variance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Look forward to seeing it completed. Long ride or short?
It's worth it.
Thanks for all your help.
Thank you for all your support.
And your votes.
Yep. Good luck.
Thanks to you, too.
Welcome. Okay. Do we have any new business? None. Any comments from the floor? None. Any communications? None.
No.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.